Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Monday, August 25 at 7:02 PM. I think everybody is here. I will make a note that this is Yumila's last meeting.
Thank you all.
And also, our new alternate is Sierra Kevin. He was appointed at the trustee meeting last Monday. He was appointed as an alternate for this evening and then as a permanent member starting at the next meeting, so that saves a having to go back and have another thing at the trustees. So hey, perfect, there you go. So welcome, Kevin. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for July 29, 2025. I know at least Lorraine had some edits to it, I saw it come through.
You don't have to act on this, it just got to you today, my apologies.
If people want more time to look over mine, like I said, I know Lorraine.
I didn't look at them, but I trust.
We can wait until the next meeting?
I would suggest, you know, Lisa and Lorraine always catch things, so.
Yeah, I never.
Just.
I happen to be just sitting around on the couch when they came.
Waiting for brownies to cook.
At least right now.
Okay, yeah, so let's put that on hold a little bit, we'll do it at the next meeting. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to bring up an item that is not already on the agenda for this evening.
We have nobody on Zoom?
I see nobody on Zoom.
Oh, no, nobody?
Nope.
No, Lee is on already. Okay.
Here are no comments, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I will move to close the public comment.
Second by Lisa, all in favor. And I would say, Kevin, as an alternate, you don't have to vote, so it's not that you don't have to, it's that you don't. If you were appointed as, like if, you know, Lisa wasn't here, we would appoint you as a voting member for that night, so you don't vote as an alternate, so there you go.
But this will be your only.
But this will be the only.
Next time you are, you can.
And you can move and you can second.
There you go.
You've got to jump in there, because some of the people here are fast.
But you do, other than voting, you do get to comment, you know, share comments, anything that you want to say.
As an alternate, you have all the same rights except for.
Except for the official. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of village code changes and corrections. So this has obviously been something we've been working on for a few months now, which is great. I feel like we've actually been making good progress on it, so I would like to thank everyone for meeting in their small subgroups and going over things. I did not get a chance to meet with Lisa pretty much after the meeting last time, I was at work and then out of town for various vacations with children and/or without children, and just got back a few hours ago. But Lisa and I are going to meet between now and the next meeting to go over the kind of second chunk of stuff she had been working on before Jonathan left. I know that Jim and Yumila are going to talk about their kind of review of the sections that they had. Before we go over that, though, I talked to Lisa earlier, and I know she had some thoughts that she wanted to talk about, just about process and how we want to kind of tackle this chunk of it.
So when Yumila sent this spreadsheet, I liked that spreadsheet a lot, but I couldn't print, I didn't have legal, and you can barely read it. So, but the fact of the matter is, is this whole Google Docs thing is something I've not worked extensively with before, but it's just like constantly changing, and I don't feel comfortable with our process doing that, because once we've made a decision of what we want to present to the boards of trustees, I think we should have one person be in charge of that, and I would urge that to be. And we have a master that is, this is it, so that this chart, of which we have multiple ones kicking around, is always, that is just it. And I think Mike is the best person to do that, but we can discuss that. And I'm, you know, somebody else can think.
I can't log on to this, I can't remember my Gmail password.
Okay.
What about anonymous?
I can share it again with you, if you'd like.
So if you're comfortable with Google Docs or not, you can say no.
I am. Every time I'm, be fine if you want to learn how to do it, or what.
Do what?
Work with Google Docs.
Oh, I don't like Google Docs. I don't, because it's, I don't like.
You can Hancock.
Keep from editing.
Yeah, so what I would say is, since he's not comfortable with it, I'm happy, especially because this is Yumila's last night, I'm happy taking that, putting it up in the little section that I have, that's just like planning board stuff, sharing it with everybody, but only the access with everybody. I'll be the person that can edit it, and I will not edit it unless we are all here talking about it.
And have voted to.
And have agreed, yeah. So we won't change anything until we say, yes, this is a change that we want to send to the trustee, and if there's notes, or, not that I want to send some, like, you know, gigantic verbose log of things to them, but if there's anything, you know, quick we need to capture about that, we can capture that there, too.
Okay, because I did talk to my son, and I said, I'm not understanding this, he says, oh, you can prevent people from.
That was the problem with Google Docs, is they're all working in there, once somebody makes a change, that's it, and you can't expect to see what the old thing.
And I think that we're at the point now where, right, especially with, you know, Jim and Yumila starting tonight, that we can say, yes, let's have a master chart of here's what we want to send to the trustees, and let's start working off that in these public meetings.
Okay.
Not like when you and I meet, we're not going to.
No, no, no.
We're going to do very similar to what Lorraine and I did, or what, you know, Jim and Yumila did, yeah.
And then the other thing that.
Oh, you're on the comments.
That I would say is, if we don't have a definition, we give it to Mike, and you will research that for us, and then we'll, but we'll just keep going, we'll just, I mean, it's not like, oh, we can't go any farther.
Yeah, let's, if there is a specific thing that we want to discuss, and we don't have a definition.
We'll just cycle back.
This is up for debate, but I would suggest, yes, let's not skip over, you know, Lorraine and I, because we're missing one definition for everything. Let's go over everything except if there's a definition missing. I think that that makes sense.
All right, good. I just, I just thought, oh, you know, this is going to be hard to keep control if people are messing around.
And I do want to go and open that, too. So yeah, when we're done, actually, I was going to say, if you want to send it to me.
I have just sent it to you, and I also edited the, I added you as.
Okay.
You have to accept ownership of the document, but you, I'm transferring ownership to you. So as of the minute you accept it, the document is now yours, and I'm just an arper on it.
Just an arper on it.
Yeah, the definitions, I mean, I can, I can handle that as far as looking up possibly other municipalities, or even if the unified code.
Oh, yeah.
Definition, it might be nice to go.
Because I started to do that with pharmacy, and, yeah, I kind of got bogged down, I thought, okay, this is, and some of them are, you know, you want pieces from each of them, and then, and I thought, all right, this is again, something we're going to probably have to discuss as a group, okay.
Do you send that to my Gmail account?
Let me see where it went. Oh, no, it went to your, yeah, it went to your Gmail.
Okay.
For Cornell?
No, that's fine, I just have it up here.
I'll send it one more time.
Get the awkward silence?
Yeah, you know, technology, super fast. And if it doesn't work for whatever reason, we can, you know, you can track it tonight, and then we'll get it sorted out between now and the next meeting.
Get the awkward silence?
Yeah, you know, technology, super fast. And if it doesn't work for whatever reason, we can, you know, you can track it tonight, and then we'll get it sorted out between now and the next meeting. Anything else? I think those are two really good suggestions, sorry, I happened to call Lisa to apologize this morning or this afternoon about not having time to meet before I left town, but we will, we will get that done before now and.
So you're going to assume a master?
Yes.
Can I ask something here? When they start going over, Jim and Yumila start going over the section, the uses, and they make a suggestion that, okay, hey, we want this in business and tech, and we don't want this here anymore, would it be good to have them go through all of it and say, okay, we'd like this in, this out, this in, this out, and give us your reasoning, and that is going to take, at least for me, it's going to take me a little bit to even think about ramifications of putting something, a different use in a certain area.
Right. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Do we discuss like, right away, or do we kind of let it marinate a little bit and come back, discuss it next meeting? I think you probably ought to set some type of protocol.
Well, if you're going to need time to review stuff anyway, I mean, I have no problem, right? So we won't vote to say, yes, this is what we want to send to the trustees tonight, but we can say, yes, that's acceptable, you know, go do whatever you need to do to take a look at what we're proposing to send along, and then at the next meeting.
So listen to their readings for doing it, take down notes.
Think about, yeah, no, I think you're right.
Yeah, audit.
Because sometimes, strange thing, yeah, they've looked at it more deeply than we have, and we haven't had time to think about that. And, yeah, and the one thing that is really important is we don't rush this necessarily, because we want to try to get it right.
Yeah, I think we've been making good progress on it, and I don't think there's any rush, it's not like, gosh, if we don't have this done this summer, summer's almost over.
Because we're in a good stretch right now, where I don't foresee any special permits.
I was going to say, I think given the way the whole economic thing is going, that we've got some time here to really focus on this for a while.
Well, why don't you, Yumila, why don't you and Jim start just kind of going over what it is? Everyone's got a kind of bigger enlarged copy of their section of uses in here, and then also some definitions printed off in here, too, so we can, we can start going over that, and we'll figure out the technology later.
Okay, so we didn't go over, last time, members-only fuel station was only in the PDA, so that's easy. Mixed use, we talked about that one last time. Mobile home, we talked, that was a pretty, we didn't want anything changed there. Multi-unit residential building only in super areas, that one generated some discussion, and I think it probably will need to generate discussion amongst everybody here, because the definition for multi-unit building, let me make sure I have it exactly, is three or more units. Right? So, so one of the things that kind of tripped us up a little bit, and that might need some tightening, is thinking about the number of units that we want to include in a multi-unit definition, because 60 units is multi-unit, three units is multi-unit, but they're really very different.
But this also is the one that has the dogs in it.
It also says something about kenneling.
Yes.
For some reason, it rose to the level that the definition of a kennel needed to be in the definition.
There's a definition in terms, 145.3, and then there's a definition.
Oh, I'm looking, 145.
Right, that's, that's after the charter uses.
So you're talking about the 145-31.
Yeah, 145-3, and this is one of those spots where we kind of want to tighten up where things are. It's not under multi-unit building, it's under building, comma, residential, and then multi-unit. And I kind of feel like, if it's risen to the level where it's an area use, it's probably get its own definition, or we rearrange the area use to have the definitions make sense. So, yeah, so it just says, a detached building containing three or more dwelling units. So that's a really broad definition, because three or more is three, or it's 300.
Yeah.
And the way we want to allow things might be really different for three units versus something that's a very large, you know, like intensive, yeah. So we need to think about how we define that before we decide what's allowed where, because you don't want to allow a 60-unit building in a low-density area, but you might be okay with three, you know? And depending on like how many square feet a thing is, it might be appropriate. I could easily see some of these larger houses, if you told me there are three different units there, I would totally believe it, there's like, you know, thousands of square feet, and giant driveways, so having three cars would not be untoured. So we need to think about that. So I think before we can decide what's appropriate in that, whether it's allowed in low-density, medium, high, or low-medium traffic, we need to think about what, what we're defining, because it's just too broad.
Okay.
And then, of course, the other part of it is that it talks about it being in a sewered area only, and so now that we have this sewer going, and that's costing everybody a lot of money, and it's going to cost the village a lot of money, do we want to think about how we change, how we allow different density to maybe increase our tax base?
Well, the code currently does allow for an increased amount of one to go to sewer, so that, right?
Are you talking about the lot size?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can have them be a little more, but not number of units necessarily.
And it's just not going to physically work in an area that isn't.
Right, right.
Not going to have a large enough field, a subject field for it.
Right, for three units, yeah.
Right, but now, basically, all of Keoga Heights Road and all of that area could easily handle more because of the.
This was, this was brought up, remember this, Lisa?
I certainly do.
I'll have to remember, too, right, both of you, that I think when Don Hertel was here, we had talked about what are going to be the ramifications of, now that East Shore and Keoga Heights have the ability to become more dense, do we want that? We want to set up the parameter so that it could become more dense, and if so, we would no longer have a low-density residential area, it would more be more of a medium-density all over the place, so it's, you know, action, reaction at that point.
No, because I was concerned, and I think you looked at that to see which.
How many more parcels?
Would be, and it wasn't that many.
I think you did it recently, because one of the.
Yeah, that was in the last year or so.
But that was, you were looking at, if I remember, it was, you were looking at parcels along East Shore and Keoga Heights Road that had enough frontage to be split.
Be subdivided, and not necessarily add units, but subdivided. And there were some.
I'd have to find that again, I know I have it someplace.
Because I remember you saying, our, my particular property was a poster child for that, and I said, well, I'm not interested right now. But, yeah. But I do think that some of the survey questions from the comp plan survey indicates people are looking for more density.
Yeah.
And I think that's the trend. So I guess it's something we really should be looking at.
Yeah. Well, I mean, none of that, but like, housing is getting more and more expensive by the minute, so, you know, if it's a situation where, you know, we need to build more housing to meet demand, so the demand, you know, so the prices don't just go skyrocketing, that'd be one thing. The other thing, too, is the more housing we have, the more tax base we have.
Right.
And I think that's, my biggest concern is that the math doesn't work out for maintaining a super line on the density that we have, and the taxes that we're generating. It just, you know, we're going to be in a hole.
But you also had the more housing, I didn't interrupt you, I'm sorry, more housing had less ability, like you're going to have, though.
That's true, yeah, there's a bunch of things. How come, all right, I'm embarrassed that I have to ask this after all this time, but why do we have two definitions, for example? One is for, why do we have these two definitions, two sections in our code?
I don't know, and I don't know why it was ever, obviously, this was a long time ago, so I don't know why, like, multi-residential has three dogs and six.
I was, I mean, if you don't let, you know, if I would be looking at the code, and does it refer us to, does it say? So you look for the definition, you think, oh, a detached building containing three or more dwelling units, or, and I go off and I work with that, but meanwhile, there's this other thing, and now I have six dogs, and so I didn't know that that was part of it. I mean, I think maybe we should also consider consolidating our definitions.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah. I mean, it's a very good idea to consolidate definitions.
I don't understand the whole dog thing.
Nobody understands.
And they have to be over six months old.
Pardon?
Could be considered a kennel.
I have no idea why that.
I don't know, it doesn't.
Otherwise it would be.
That's how many units or anything.
Well, the other thing, too, is, like, the thing about over six months old, I think their idea is that they didn't want to legislate against somebody who had puppies.
Who was breeding puppies, maybe, or just had, oh, I see what you mean, like, like if a dog just had puppies.
Dog just had puppies, and now they're considered a kennel, because their dog had six puppies.
And how would we know?
And how would we know? Yeah. I mean, how do we enforce, do we care?
Yeah, I mean, ready to scratch it.
But in scratching, you have to figure out how you want to, how many units you want to.
Yeah, what makes sense? How do you, how do you really, we look at other definitions.
See what other.
And, I mean, the other thing, too, is there's, there's the number of units, because there's also a footprint of a building.
Exactly.
Right, because like, you know, you were talking about, my next door.
Tiny or big.
Has like a 5,000-square-foot house, three of those. You know, that, that has an impact differently, like, I can see lots, there are plenty of three-family houses that are smaller than my next-door neighbor's single, well, single-family house with an apartment.
So what is, I know, townhouse versus multi-unit.
Townhouse is because it has a property line.
Because they're owned.
Yeah, well, it has a, it's basically this definition of a townhouse, and it's something similar to having a single front yard, a single backyard, or a single side yard, however, so I'll get you a definition, but the big difference is, the two units, they are right together, but there's a property line right together that requires a two-hour firewall, so they're completely different.
For construction, is there?
They're basically single family, they're just.
But they're really tight.
Yes.
They have common walls.
Yeah, common.
Yeah, they have a common wall, but the common wall has to be rated a firewall, to separate the property, and they each have to have individual, like, utility systems.
Yes, I would say that part.
So I didn't know that, that's, okay.
So a multi-unit is not that. Don't have a town.
Norway is not multi-unit, those are.
No, those are townhouses, and they own each individual, is owned, okay.
And you have, you could have, like, townhouse-style rentals.
Yes.
That are multi-unit, where the individual doesn't own the property, but in, in building it, you've built it so that each slice is its own piece of property.
And that would be like a definition, except at East Point, there's an apartment above an apartment, does that matter?
That makes it a multi-unit.
So, all right, so.
Completely different rating on them.
Yep, so they are townhouses.
Okay, then they, but they call them townhouses, that's why I'm asking.
That's a marketing name, and they should, if they're definite or not.
A good example, if you remember, I remember Lansing Meadows Project.
I do recall the Lansing Meadows.
Three units, yeah, three, yeah, three units. And there was discussion at one time whether.
It would be owned.
Was going to rent those or sell those.
Right.
The way you could sell them would be to subdivide them, then they would become single-family townhouses.
Right.
Now they are classified as a multi-unit.
Okay. So some of it has to do with ownership.
Yeah, there is a definition for a townhouse unit in our code.
Oh, there is? It's just not on our chart.
One-unit residential building on a single attached to one or more one-unit residential buildings, which centered on shared walls.
My goodness.
If only as part of a cluster subdivision or a PDA.
Okay.
So the Meadows are townhomes?
Yeah, the one.
The Meadows on Graham Road. The Meadows on Graham Road, are those townhomes?
No, no, those are apartments.
They aren't either.
Because they're rental property, they're not owned.
They're not owned.
These are basically houses that are glued together, is a townhouse.
Yeah, like you get your own deed to your own townhouse parcel.
And your own yard, and your own this and that, and each one has its own water meter, and its own sewer line, and its own this.
And someone explained to me, and it poured a picture in my head, I'm like, basically, if you have a townhouse, a townhome, you, you own to the core of the earth, essentially, like, imagine tickle slice and went all the way down, that is all yours, in front of your house, behind your house, and to the walls. And one wall, at least, you have to share with somebody else. But like, so you own it all the way down, and if you can call it that, you know, it's one owner that owns it all the way down, it's a townhouse.
Okay, got it.
And it's more expensive to build, obviously.
It's easiest to tell if you take a look at, let's say, maps with the lot lines and stuff.
Right.
If you see a lot line separating a parcel of two buildings, or one building, you see a lot line going through the middle of it, it's more than likely a townhouse.
Because I, so we do have a definition, it's just it's not on our chart here.
So it's only allowed as part of a cluster subdivision or.
And therefore, okay, so therefore it isn't, okay.
But maybe something to think about.
We don't have PDA on here, right, okay.
So what did you say, the development up where Mike used to live?
Lansing Meadows, too.
Lansing Meadows, too. Those are our townhouses?
Yes, they are.
That's kind of, as you were talking, that's what it sounded like, but I guess sort of like row houses.
Now, and I think when we did the Milcroft, when they finally also said they were going to do that one row of townhouses, and so those would be then owned, I guess. Whereas the other individual ones would not be, but that was part of a cluster subdivision. Okay.
It was a fur way for him to get more density.
Yeah, I remember that. And plus, it also kind of was a good transition from the other townhouses that are right there, from the, that are there now. Lansing, trails, townhouses. You were not here for that, no?
Okay.
Well, if and when that ever comes back, it'd be our deal.
Okay, so, so that's multi-unit, I will leave you guys to untangle. Museums and public buildings, the definition is museum, art gallery, observatory, and library. That's, that's all it says.
Public buildings.
Yeah.
Any other types of public buildings.
Right, but the definition in, in, what is, in 145.82, it just says, museum slash public buildings, colon, museum, art gallery, observatory, library. So there are other public buildings that aren't listed in that, obviously, like, we're in a public building right now, and it's not listed there.
But this is a government facility, which is.
Not a public building, same thing.
Oh.
And then there was a, the odd thing is that, for the most part, it made sense that we, where they're listed in special permit, in high-density residential, and then commercial, low, medium, and high traffic, but I made a note, there might be some special cases where we might want to allow them somewhere else, so for instance, if you wanted to build an observatory, you couldn't.
As technology, you might consider it there.
Yeah. You could consider it there, but there are other things that, you know, other places that it's appropriate to have some of these, like, I'm thinking of, if you wanted an observatory, you wouldn't put it in a commercial district, there's not much light pollution. If you had something like the, the Octagon Schoolhouse, I don't know if we have anything that rises to the level of historic building that we'd ever want to do something like that with, but like, that would be a commercial, low-district type of place, and it's a public museum, that's this kind of oddball thing.
The historic house, which we don't have any either, but that kind of thing would be a fine there, because it would be the house.
Right, so, so I guess, I don't know if we have situations in which putting them anywhere else would be appropriate, but I could think of situations in general in which putting things somewhere else might be appropriate, so I'm not quite sure how we want to handle that. I mean, maybe special permits enough, in which case we would recommend allowing them in low-density and medium-density residential, but they'd have to come for a special permit?
With, with conditions for traffic and all of that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to be very strict on your special permits.
Yeah. Let's see, and natural parks, just as any unimproved, that's fine everywhere. Office, studio, and service, that was another one.
Service.
Yeah, so, and, again, in 82, definition is office slash studio slash service, colon, architect, insurance, lawyer, realtor, doctor, dentist, physical therapy, veterinarian, includes animals under treatment, secretarial, printing, multi-copying, testing lab, administrative office, adult education and training, photography, tailoring, barber, beauty shop, spa, and tutoring. So there's a lot of things there.
Goodness.
There's also a lot of things not there, but.
But we can't just skip everything, that.
Yeah.
You're going to think of everything.
You can't, there's, and there are, there are so many different, this was written, like, my sense is this was written at a time where having businesses in your home was a little less common.
All my donation stuff, name?
Yeah, I mean, it's, a classic kind of example that you gave, Jim, is like, you know, it used to not be uncommon where you'd go to someone's home, and the dentist's office was like that side piece of the house.
I grew up with that.
Across the house.
Yep.
You know, or there was attorney who had a side office, and you went and visited his side office, and whatever. So there, there are cases like that. How do we deal with things like that? Do we want to welcome that kind of use or not? You know, and, and because, you brought a very good point, Jim, that some of it is about how much traffic you generate.
That's it.
Right? You know, so if you're like, you know, I know of a graphic designer who has an office, and they see clients once in a blue moon, but mostly, they just kind of work out of their home office.
So who had home occupation? You guys, you and Lorraine? Because home occupation is what some of the, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, so what...
It depends. Are you working out of your home as an architect or a lawyer, or are you working out of an office in an office building somewhere as an architect or lawyer? So home occupation and this are two different...
Okay. Yep.
Do you, Mike, have an example off the top of your head of something that is where the use is office, studio, or service?
Well, I mean, yeah.
So it's, it's traffic, I guess?
One of that. You probably go, probably go right on down through a lot of the Lama Building, you got lawyers' offices, anything like that.
Dental offices.
So those are some good examples down through that swath there, then?
That's empty.
I think one of the things, when it comes to, you know, reworking the definition, is, you know, so people don't get, don't get ensnared, is, for example, the professional, lawyer, architect, or whatever, who may, you know, have an office, they spend a lot of time working at home, because it's, you know, phone calls or research, but people don't come by there to see them, or don't accept deliveries, you know, don't want to, wouldn't want to see somewhere down the road that, that person who does that being contacted by the code enforcement officer, saying that they're conducting a business, really not in terms of the goals of, you know, the protections being afforded, you know, if you're restricting businesses to certain areas. You know, somebody works there versus what we've been talking about, where they actually conduct a business there, you know, see clients, or their, their name or their business name is, you know, on the property. You know, so, you know, maybe a small point, but I think we want to be mindful of that when, you know, rewriting the definition.
Yeah, so maybe, let's, let's think about, like, where home occupation ends.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Begins, and make that sign clear.
That's what I was just sitting here thinking. Well, wait a minute. Why get confused? If it's in low density and medium density, it's more likely to be a home occupation. I mean, that's where, that, some of these things were, for example, lawyer or whatever, but there's some things here that you wouldn't want in there. I would not want the testing lab or some of those things.
Right.
In LDR or MDR, probably.
Not at all.
And I know when we had the one-home occupation, it was a beauty shop. People were concerned. Some of it, I thought was just change was coming hard, but some of it is valid. If there's a lot of noise, or odors, or chemical smells, or, you know, traffic, all of that got involved. But, yeah, but that's because it was in a low-density or medium-density place.
Right. And honestly, I think it'd probably be harder to put something like that in a, in a medium-density residential, because, and a low-density residential, there's so much space between you and your neighbor, you don't notice if, you know, she's perming people three times a day. I don't know.
So, the definition might be changing, but I'm not sure where the locations are due.
I mean, it looks like, as reading it, rereading it more closely, the definition of home occupation as currently written seems to address the concern that I just raised, because nobody...
You're not supposed to have people coming.
Heck, your traffic, people weren't visiting there, there was no sale goods.
You'd be selling any goods.
And it's incidental, it's actually incidental, the fact that you live there.
Yes.
The whole...
I, I think that definition, you know, addresses my concern, but still...
But you're, but it's, it's really what you, Mel, just said, is where does home occupation stop, and this begin, kind of thing.
Well, some, some of it...
Where we want it to be allowed.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, in the definition of home occupation, I think that, that does set up some boundaries.
But this is such a broad...
This can, when I take a look at, my thought, when I go through this, is I basically base it on the service.
Yes.
You're providing a service. Most of the examples they give out there, you're providing a service. And you find a lot of that right here on North Trippam Road, you find a lot of it in the mall. And then you have a place, for example, like Ross, which you're selling goods, and becomes a small-scale sale.
Retail, yeah.
Small-scale sales, has to be retail. So you're basing it between either selling something or a service. That's kind of what it's broken down to.
So, studio. Yeah, I mean, like, with the...
There's someone around the corner from us that has a little outbuilding that's a
studio, an art studio. And they regularly have people come to their space.
Right.
You know, and...
Real, right.
Yeah, and it's, it's not necessarily disruptive, but it, like, you know, if they see, you know, six clients a day, I'm thinking of someone who has a, who, out of her home, does therapy, and then also has an art studio. So there, there are situations where they might have six people come in a single day, which is a little bit more than just regular, like, visiting traffic.
Or the home occupation, that therapy.
Yeah, but then, but then they also have an art studio, and they open it up on, like, certain weekends for sales.
Is that at their house?
Yes.
Right, so then, that would be home...
Home occupation.
More home occupation, right?
Would that fit under the definition that you prescribed? Actually, you said no one coming to the house.
No, home occupation, you do have people coming to the house.
It just says not more than you would get as regular visitors.
Right.
And, well, actually, but, you know, I guess it depends on how popular you are.
People showing up very often, unless invited.
Or additional vehicular traffic is produced other than what would be expected for the customer, I mean, so...
Use of a dwelling unit.
Yeah.
I get six people coming to my house every day.
Your hand if you get six people.
Right, no sale goods or services, so I guess it depends on, you know, what are they doing out of that, yeah?
Yeah.
I think that was one of the other issues with this beauty shop thing, is that they were gonna have product.
Yeah, but what's the primary intent of it, right?
Yes.
If the primary intent of it really is to, you know, cut people's hair, and those sort of services, that's one thing. And if you happen, you know, happen to sell some shampoo, right, you're not a shampoo shop.
Sale of goods and services.
Right. But I'm, I'm saying, what's the primary use of a place?
That's a service.
Same thing that Mike, yeah, that's a service, right. That's a service, yeah.
I think it's, it's a really broad definition, because there's a lot of services that, that would be considered sale of a service, that kind of doesn't fall in the one versus the other.
So are we saying that we need to have a new definition on this one as well? Is that where we're landing?
Maybe tighten it up.
Yeah, I think it just, it needs some work.
Yeah, usually, there's something along the lines of, like, no, you can't tell from the inside versus a sign.
Yeah, I thought that was in here somewhere. I thought we had seen that somewhere before, but I guess not.
So that, but this, that's under home occupation. Yeah, but for this...
So the definite, while we have been looking up other municipalities definitions of museum or office, studio, and service, and they align with all of the things that we have listed, I guess it's just a question of, do we think all of these things should be treated alike, and therefore, don't need to separate them out from one another? Or are services, should services be treated differently than offices? I don't necessarily have a problem with them all being combined, if you think they should all be treated alike. Because the definitions are pretty close to what everyone else has.
Have you run across any issues with this, this general use, that you're aware of, like, trying to, you know, having projects come beforehand, trying to fit them into a bucket, or working with people to get them into an area where it seems like...
Especially for that.
Stick with the whole thing, like I said...
Testing lab, that's why...
Services they're offering.
Right.
Whereas if they're selling merchandise or whatnot, it's kind of a pretty neat separation.
So, you know how I asked, how did the lab get over on Craft Road? This would be that. And, and it would be allowed.
Testing in.
And it would be allowed in that area. I think, well, no. Oh, no, is that HGR?
They're providing a service.
Yeah, but they're also a testing lab. I'm just saying.
But that's the service.
But that's the service.
That's the service, is the testing.
And it happens to be specifically listed, which is...
Yes, I know.
And it's funny, because I, when, all, mostly the things felt like, I could see that being part of some sort of small office thing, but the minute you got to testing lab, it felt like it, it's not quite like the others.
I think the fact that it's kind of similar to everyone else's is reassuring, actually.
Testing lab is not, but yes.
Yes.
All the other conglomerates put together are fairly similar. They had, they had them separated, though I haven't looked deep enough to know if they permit them differently.
Oh, I see, whether there are extra conditions or something.
Or a lab.
Well, I wonder if this is that same thing, and we were talking about it, right? Here's another use. Testing lab, which offers studio service. What differentiates testing lab from...
The other kind of lab.
There's other things in here.
Article ed.
Yeah, well, well, I mean...
Training, photography.
Yeah, we've talked about a couple different, you know, a couple different things in here, where, you know, does testing lab, what's the difference between a testing lab and a medical lab? Well, I guess it depends what you're testing, but...
I think it probably depends on whether you're using certain types of...
But we don't say that anywhere, so we, we don't have it defined.
No.
Right, then it comes up to Mike when he asks you classify something as a use.
Do you use any radioactive materials at your site, or do you have hazardous waste, or whatever? I don't know.
So maybe, maybe that's something, again, there's been discussion in looking at, like, you know...
Testing lab.
Clinic versus hospital versus medical, versus, you know, other things like that. Maybe, I wonder, because that is kind of an outlier in there.
Testing lab, though, doesn't have to necessarily be for people, it could be products, right?
Sure it is, yeah, no, I...
Very one, isn't it?
Yeah, they don't, yep.
Yep.
But I wonder if there is a way to, does it make sense to classify things like that together, you know, just in general for, for everything?
Right. Keep it where, but the use, it seems...
Maybe testing lab is a new use. I mean, right, you know, again, you know, we didn't say, this wasn't limiting it to just what we have in here, and saying, we don't want to add or remove anything. No, there's definitely things that maybe we, you know, want to recommend to remove, or we want to recommend to break out and add. And again, it's not just a, well, you can't do that right now, well, what if something, you know, in the future does happen? Now, we have talked about more, like, dispensary or something, there's no, we don't have a definition, we don't have a use, we don't have anything of that in here. Maybe we should, maybe not. Maybe it fits into something just fine for, you know...
But it seems that where it's, these things are now allowed, with the types of special permit, seems appropriate to me, actually.
Yeah. It's almost, well, I guess, again, it depends on, what they're doing at the testing lab, because there, there could be a rationale behind saying, maybe I want to have a testing lab and research in HHS.
Well, there...
Well, then, again, what is the, it depends on what you're testing. If it's gonna, you know, if somebody comes up and says, I want to do this. Oh, well, that's medical laboratory in HHS.
Yeah.
And that's the only place. Which is where I got confused, I'm thinking, well, then, how can that be there? Because I consider that a medical laboratory, but apparently...
Laboratory doesn't have a definition.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Are we backing, should we be sure we have definitions for everything before we do all this?
Well, I think this is what, that's, I know that when Lorraine and I went through, we flagged the ones that didn't have definitions, asked Mike, and Mike found some of them, they were just in a different spot or provided them, so...
Yeah, so, yeah, so we gotta get them together so we can find them, and anyone else can find them.
Well, and we had talked about that, too, before, is when we do have all these things, is there a real good reason why they should be in more than one place?
I can't think so.
I can't think of, as long as it's defined in there, wouldn't it be great if it was all right after the chart of uses? Here's the chart of uses, here's everything defined. As opposed to, here's some terms. We'll reference these later on, way down in the code, once you hit the chart of uses, and then you can come back. No, probably not. Chart of uses, definition.
I mean, the fact that we've not been able to find certain things kind of is a tip-off that we need to make some change.
And I think everybody found a couple of them.
Yes.
I know, I know that we did, clearly they did, I know that you did, so yes, they're in there.
Okay.
The other question I had is kind of a global question, you know, like, for instance, here, we, and this happens in a bunch of them, we name specific kinds of businesses, like, here we, architect, insurance, lawyer, realtor.
Doctor, lawyer.
There, there are so many other things that people do now, that probably we didn't imagine as being jobs back then. So, like, do we want to enumerate specific jobs? Like, how specific do we get? Or do we want to stop enumerating specific jobs so that we can make a general definition of, like, what kind, like, is it, is it a white-collar kind of job, or is it a...
So is it, well, this is another problem I've always had, too, is this doesn't mean that's the only...
You're never gonna, you're never going to flag every use in this definition.
Otherwise, we, our code would be even twice as big as...
Maybe put at the end a tagline along the lines of, "And similar uses," or...
Yes, how would, yes.
I think Natalie can come up with something more artful, but...
Yeah, so it's like, establishment providing executive management administrative or professional services, but not involving medical or dental services. Typical uses include...
Typical uses include. That kind of was a satisfying definition.
Include, to make it clear that if it's not listed, doesn't mean that it's...
This is not an exhaustive list.
I think if you say typical uses include, that that's a really nice, is very understandable that then, you understand kind of it is more administrative and not some of these other things. I like that one.
It's the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Pittsburgh.
I think they might be on to something.
So if we, if we want to keep this definition with that kind of broad, you know, both offices and lab, testing labs, do we want to say that maybe we want to consider that in human health services? Because, like, some of these things, why wouldn't you have it in human health services?
Like adult education and training, for example.
Yeah.
So, again, remember, when we reviewed this, Carol and I were working separately with business and technology.
But she's talking HHS.
Yeah, this is flagged, though, if you look at, if you take a look, if you, yeah, HHS was part of that.
If, if we look at...
If you took a look, take a look at the email that Carolyn sent out, there are proposed changes to BTD and HHS, and one of the proposed changes to HHS is allowing office, studio service in HHS.
Okay, great.
Also, if you go back to your question about museums and public buildings, there was also a proposal to have that included in the BTD. to have that included in the BTD, so both those thoughts are captured in there, yeah, because they own, that is all their property, so, yeah, I focused on BTD, but it was really BTD and HHS at the same time, and Carolyn...
Well, offices and studios already allowed in BTD.
Right.
That one was, yeah.
You're saying HHS.
In HHS, though, for that one.
About an RSH, also research?
No.
I don't put anything in research.
Yeah, no, that's...
Basically, Bird Sanctuary, and then the rest of that land up there is basically wetlands. Yeah, it's the one green area.
Which is why the only thing is natural parks. Why do we even list that? Sort of like...
You said there's a bird observatory?
The Cornell Lab of Ornithology.
There's some other things in research, I mean...
But, yeah, I think it makes sense to have HHS often.
Okay, so I made a note, maybe see email from...
Yeah, because I think when we're done, we will marry this up with those changes too. And then we, but we can go back and we can revisit our thoughts and comments too, just to make sure we didn't miss anything.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we had a single unit residential, we didn't actually get a chance to talk about that. One thing, though, is I'll flag that the definition is, it's one of those that talks about kenneling again.
Okay.
So somewhere someone was obsessed with kennels.
It must have been, because there used to be a kennel down at the, if you plow through across, you guys rode on Oak Crest and just plow into the woods, it was right, there's a house down there, and that used to be a kennel 30 years ago.
Okay, so somebody...
Must have, it must have been about that, where else? That's weird.
That's so weird.
We're obsessed with kennels.
Wait, but it has the exact same, same number of dogs?
Different, in a different...
Three. One, still trying to use this stupid...
It's more than three dogs.
It has the same definition as multi-unit.
There's a lot of those where you see it, it's just copied under different sections, yeah.
All of them.
Is it any more?
Well, I think...
Yeah, so both places.
Yeah, it's one, three kennels.
I know.
I'd say it was six, or for the purpose of breeding and boarding, or whatever. And the other place just says three or four more do, three or more dogs over six months.
See, it's trying to differentiate one-unit residential from kennel.
Section you...
The one-unit residential and the multi-unit residential.
The exact same definition.
Oh, okay, it does say more than three.
It is an odd one.
Yeah, but it doesn't include the purpose.
Meanwhile, I don't even think we allow kennels anymore, period. Because once the one kennel went out, it was grandfathered, and then it was never going to be allowed, once it...
Anything that has to do with animals, we go strictly by the town code.
And how do we make that clear? We have not really made that clear in our...
There is, I'll find it someplace, I'll find it out to you, because there is something in our code about that.
So I can't, I was, I can't have a bunch of horses or goats or...
I had to be, because one who asked...
Oh, the chickens, we got into the chickens.
Having chickens and horses, and I had to...
There's kind of a difference.
...town of Lansing, suppose, or...
That's right, oh, for the chickens, that's right.
We have chickens.
Something like, no roosters.
Yeah, it's roosters, and I think you can't have more than six, is that, more than...
Yeah, it's a number.
There's a number.
And no roosters. Of course, it's hard to tell sometimes, so it's a little late.
Yeah, I had one that turned into a rooster, and we're like, oh, and soup.
Yeah.
Okay, so with the one-unit residential building, obviously allowed in low density, allowed in medium density, and allowed in high density, also allowed by right in low traffic, commercial. And that was one I had a question about.
Oh, yes, why would we do that?
We want to just let that be as a right, we want to maybe unused, one-unit residential? That section, or have it there with special permit? I mean, Lorraine, you brought up how in the comp plan, sorry, Lisa, you brought up how in the comp plan survey, there was really kind of a lot of village feeling towards more density. And so if we're trying to get more density, keeping single-family units in commercial low traffic, doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense for the tax-based argument either.
Yeah.
Well, and this goes back, and this is also tied into the same comment that Lorraine and I had when we were looking at additional residential building on a single lot. That's allowed in the three residential districts, but also then in CLT. So I imagine that those two perhaps jump with each other somehow, or for some...
You've got a big example next door here, this is your example next door.
What?
Multi-unit, we have multi-b buildings, you have a single-family home in the front.
Is this where?
Where?
Oh, right here, right next door.
Oh, you mean the hairdresser place?
You have a multi-mixed unit, not a multi-unit, a mixed unit behind a single-family unit right next door.
And that's commercial low traffic?
Yes, that is commercial low traffic.
That's your example.
I was also wondering about Crystal Spa, which...
She's a mixed use.
Okay, because, but originally it was a home, you know, it was just a house.
Yeah.
Did she sell that property next door?
No, I don't think so.
The sign is finally gone after many years of being up there.
So then, so and then she wanted to open up that salon there, it was a special permit, it was mixed use. Okay, so, right, because you changed, there you go.
So this is the only real example right next door.
This is the perfect example.
Yeah, yeah, so the question is, do we want to encourage more of that kind of thing? Do we want to move away from that kind of thing?
I don't feel we should.
I don't think we should either.
That was part of, you know, getting into the CLT and also the CMT on the other side to just kind of phase into the residential, but I think we're trying to phase into the commercial too. Yeah, no, I wouldn't change that.
Okay.
In fact, eliminate it from...
Yeah, right, you would, that would be your suggestion, or your, yeah, okay. Again, we'll give Mike some time to ponder, but, so that was removing CLT from one-unit residential.
And then the other question I have is, what about high density? Do we want to encourage single-family homes in high-density areas?
High density...
Are they allowing it?
Residential. High-density eating.
Right, it kind of goes against our principle of, you know, stepping down from the density as you kind of move along, offering them...
The only place that it would probably still, oh, uptown, but we, what did we, we ended up doing that high density?
You guys, single-family up in there, at this point, you're talking about the...
But we changed the zoning, but...
The vacant lot you're talking about?
The one that the Atlanta group was gonna...
Need high-density residential for that.
Yeah, that was, we changed the zoning.
Yes.
Because I researched that, and oh my God, it went back and forth over the years. It started out high, then it went somewhere else, and then it came to medium, and then back to HDR, which seems appropriate, but would it be a one-unit residential building? It doesn't seem appro...
Doesn't seem appropriate.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Your Coventry Walk has got a single-family group on it, but it's in the high-density residential.
Are they single, oh, Coventry Walk, yes, they are.
It's a little circle there.
But there's not room for anything else at this point?
Arctel Park.
Yeah.
Not Kensington, but if you go down the road.
Yardley.
Yeah, those are all single-family homes in there, there aren't that many in there.
And then the only other...
That just, that almost just seems like it's, I mean, clearly looking at it, it's not a high-density residential.
No, and as a matter of fact, where's Dairy, are those Dairy one buildings?
Yeah, those are in high-density residential.
They're right here. Dairy one.
So that's, so that chunk of it, though, when you get down, there is medium density. When you actually get to that area, it's...
Where?
You get down to those, as you move up through here, it's, yeah.
No, Coventry, yeah, Coventry is...
Medium.
Is medium, yes, it is, but like Dairy one, and then where Bowmax two, or East Point two was considering is also that, and it doesn't seem...
I would, yeah, I would say, maybe it's, the suggestion is to move
Remove it a little bit.
High-density and commercial low from one-unit residential.
Thanks, to this point, I don't see anything that would be not conforming if you did take it out of high-density residential.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
And again, right, the goals as a village that we're working towards are really to not, not to promote that, that's not what we want to work towards.
Okay, but fine in low density, low, fine in medium density, and we don't need to add it to anywhere else.
Yeah.
And then the last one, again, we didn't get to this one, outdoor recreation club. And I know we had a little chat about indoor recreation early on as one of our kind of examples of how to go through this, and that took a lot longer than we thought.
Outdoor recreation.
That was part of it.
Indoor recreation club, oh, so...
Yeah, like, wait, there's no... When you first, we did a couple of these as like an example of how to, and that was one that spent a lot more time on that, I thought we would have to.
There's not a definition for outdoor?
No, there is, outdoor recreation club is public or private developed park, golf, tennis, rod and gun, boating, swimming, and commercial recreational uses. Excludes stadiums, sports arenas, snowmobile and motorbike trails, amusement parks, and drive-in theaters. Those are indoor, though, usually.
Oh, yeah.
It could be outdoor, I suppose.
Cast park.
Hockey rink.
Cast is open.
Not anymore.
It is.
Oh, I thought, being closed?
Being closed.
No longer outdoor, oh, I thought you said closed down.
Oh, no, no.
I was saying, what? Why did that?
So the only thing around here would be the swim club, right?
Yeah, I think so. But is the swim club indoor, yeah, it's outdoor, and then they have...
It's outdoor, it's all outdoor.
Outdoor.
Sure, if it came closed, it would be open year-round, but I don't think that's in the...
There are plans to...
There was a driving range. Oh, yeah, down here on, what's that road? Down Trip Hammer.
Well, the driving range is that way.
Town line, so, yeah.
In the town. Off the water wagon or something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's off a water wagon, or it was, I don't even know if it's...
Just down from the church there on the corner.
Yeah.
That was interesting, that was a driving range and train sales.
Yes, there was, it was a hobby shop or something.
Yeah. So I guess, so it's allowed in low density, medium density, and high density.
On this chart.
Also, commercial low traffic.
No.
And the business district district. Do we want to talk about whether outdoor recreation is appropriate in medium or high traffic?
Okay, wait a minute, I got to add it to my chart here.
Yeah, I messed that up, sorry.
I see Carolyn added the HHS on there.
That was from the discussion that we had with that, that might be something as they try to redevelop that area to have different things there that it might be beneficial, yeah.
Oh, yeah, actually, that would be a good place for it. Actually, so say again what you said.
Okay, so right now, it is allowed via special permit in all three residential areas.
Okay.
And then in commercial, it's allowed with special permit in low-traffic areas. So if, looking at that map, it's in the lightest of the pink. So my question is, do we want to consider allowing that in medium or high-traffic areas? I mean, I can't really see that there's a lot of space, it's allowed in...
And also, does it make sense in residential?
Yeah, there's a few things about this that I'm like, I'm not so sure about, but like, you know, for instance, if someone wanted to put in a mini-golf, would that be appropriate, like, in the parking lot of Kyuga Mall? Of the, of the mall?
Would it be appropriate on a vacant piece of property in Lansing Trails two?
Right.
I'm going to buy this, and I'm going to put a mini-golf thing on there.
Yeah.
Do we want that, so that's...
Well, okay.
That in...
Well, let's get back to the character of the neighborhood and our general conditions.
I would say no to that.
But...
Yeah.
I mean, you could deny it based on that.
But it shouldn't even get there, is kind of my, yeah, let's not rely on just the general conditions for that.
I always want to, after I've decided all these things, just wait a minute, what about the general conditions? Because if it doesn't meet the general conditions, then it shouldn't be in this. And sometimes, yeah.
Yes, but if we're saying, could you ever envision pick a thing out of that list on a low-density residential lot somewhere? No, then it doesn't need to be there, we don't need to use the general conditions as a crutch, which somebody can then argue with, it's not an allowed use.
Yes, right. So, let's see, outdoor recreation, so it is allowed in low, high, CLT.
Sorry, on the flip side of that, if you go to Lansing Trails one, so the park right there in Lansing Trails one.
Oh, the Hickey Park?
Yeah, that's, is that, is that resident, is that low-density residential, everything else around there is, I...
It's medium.
That's, is that medium?
It's what, medium density?
Oh, oh, right, yes, that makes sense, okay.
Like, you know, here's the thing, outdoor recreation, public or private developed park, that would mean like, you know, basically a public park with a playground on it, would that be allowed? You know, so like...
Right, if you're using that as the use, I can see that is beneficial to those.
Even when we had that in Moskowitz County, and I was pushed back on how the pickleball court's going to be so loud, like, the noise associated with these outdoor clubs.
It's become a real problem in some communities, it has, especially the pickleball one, and basketball.
And I hear the rod and gun stuff at my house.
But not in the middle of the night, right?
Right. One would hope not, no, those are the hunters.
But I'm just, I mean, have you ever stayed at a hotel where they had basketball?
Yeah, maybe there's a support, and they're going all the time.
Yeah, boom, 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 there's that sound, you just can't.
Yeah.
But I understand the pickleball one is worse.
Really?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a very high sound, yeah, and that's been a huge thing in zoning for, especially in Florida, where there's a lot of them.
Kevin, we throw out general conditions, what's, what goes on with this, Kevin, and you'll catch up in this, please.
Oh, yeah.
Most of these cases where you see SP, they have to come in, for example, I want to put an outdoor gun facility, whatever, it's not going to happen, in a residential district. Say it has to, say it's an allowed use, but by special permit. So they'll come in and describe what they want to do, and what we thought about is the general conditions, there are ten general conditions that have to be met in order to pass.
I'm just going to let him read them.
One of them is, does it fit in with the character of the neighborhood? This obviously doesn't fit into the character of the neighborhood, so we can allow for a special to have. So that just kind of gives you, just, because I know we just kind of threw out...
Well, I was going to say, yeah.
Conditions that...
That could be in wrong conditions.
So...
That's a, that's a sheet I gave to Mike when I passed the torch's chair over to him.
And that gives, that also like...
It's in the code, it's in there, it's 145, does it tell you 145 dash?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's in the code too, but it's just easier to...
A section of your code book, find the general condition.
I didn't mean to go off on a tangent. No, 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 that's good.
No, I think, I thought of it when we were sitting here too, and I thought, oh, man, this is like, we're talking in code, literally, you know, when you first...
Right, so I guess, I guess, as you go back to it and look at this...
I mean, I still...
Yeah, I don't know, so what were your thoughts on it, I guess, was it just up for general discussion, or...
Discussion, like, there are so many different kinds of uses that might under that, that I could see there being appropriate ones in residential and appropriate ones in commercial.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of, I kind of feel like, you probably have to allow by special permit in almost all of them, because there's so many different kinds of outdoor recreation.
And do we want to be with, with conditions, though? Not just plain?
We have to come up with the extra.
Then we have to come up with the extra.
And that might be a little difficult, given the vast...
Very hard to think of.
...traffic and high-traffic, like, we want to consider...
Well, as actually, it's the only two that we're...
That we're going to allow.
I mean, if it's allowed in CLT, why wouldn't you allow, allow it in...
CM and CH, yeah.
That's like the best use of the space, would be a question.
Well, okay, so where would, okay, what, rep club, we have swimming...
Some of these take up more space than others, obviously, swimming and tennis are very small, and golf, of course, I mean...
We talked about even at the mall having the...
Have it indoor.
Have it indoor, yeah.
What if somebody wanted to put in another swimming club in one of, in Lansing Trails? Is that CMT?
Mm-hmm.
I just don't think it makes sense in CLT. Or, I mean, low residential.
Low residential is the one that I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Which neighborhood is that?
Everything's just more...
The pale-yellow.
But I mean, I guess, I could, I'm just looking at like, how some of those areas, if you look at Blackchill, though, like, maybe at some, I don't know.
Well, I'll tell you, actually, you saw this?
But that's...
Do you want a golf course?
It's low, that's LDR, right, isn't that what we're talking about, LDR?
No.
We were talking about CLT, right? CLT.
Oh, CLT, I'm...
No, no, I'm sorry, I'm talking about low residential.
Low res, low...
So the light yellow.
The light yellow.
All this light, is that?
See, the thing is, I am sure that somewhere in there somewhere, there is a good case for somebody to put something in there, right? It's not going to be a rod and gun club, but...
There is, there is opportunity.
There is, yeah, you know, somebody could, you know, get a chunk of there and develop it somehow, or break, and it would make sense maybe to have something in there for, you know, low residential, low-density residential if they build out, you know, multiple lots and have something there.
Or that, I mean, that's a huge piece of property, and if you wanted to put in stables and trails, that would be an outdoor recreational club use thing that would not be untoured in a place that's you know, farm-aided.
Already got lots of animals.
Yeah, so, it's how about this, I kind of feel like there's a case for putting a recreation, outdoor recreation in every single one of our zones.
Of a certain type.
A certain type.
Yeah.
And so either that means that our definition of outdoor recreation club is a little too broad, or it means that we can see outdoor recreation everywhere, and maybe we consider it with special permit.
Other than the exclusions that are already in there, right, so...
Well, that's what I'm asking, like, yeah, like, yeah, because stadiums and sports arenas and so on, yeah. So I will, I will put in here, maybe add to medium and high with special permits, I don't know, because I can, I could see how we would want to use those spaces, and how we would, there'd be something that might be appropriate.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, there are, there are certain properties here that they're, they are commercial high-traffic, And if whatever was there currently disappeared, and somebody wanted to say, hey, I'm gonna put up a really nice outdoor swimming complex, for whatever reason, I don't necessarily think it would be out of character there, and it might be beneficial to residents in that area. So, yeah.
Yeah, not only that, but honestly, like, okay, so many malls across the nation that are dying malls are being repurposed for indoor recreation areas. I could absolutely see 10 years from now, a lot more recreation happening indoor than co-locating in the big open parking lot, building up a thing that's an outdoor recreation that, that complements that indoor recreation.
Just on vacation, too, and, you know, right, they have an indoor water park, and then they have this beautiful, you know, thing next to it. I'm sure it's somehow the same company, but like, you know, they've got this outdoor climbing thing, and, you know, it's only open door, but like, I could see that, I mean-
It doesn't even take up that much space.
It doesn't, and it's quiet, right, you know, it's not like-
Except when somebody fall-
Somebody yelling "we" as they go down the zip line. It wasn't me, but you know. Yeah, so maybe, yeah, okay, I just saw your-
I just put, they're adding, and with special permit.
So that's the last one on your list?
That's it?
What about, and I think, I think that's, we went over these last time, all the way at the top, from indoor rec-club down to, were there any other things that you had suggested up there? In those top few, what was it, like, indoor rec-club down to like, members-only fuel station? Members-only fuel station is, yeah.
Yeah, uh, let's see, what did it?
I think low-traffic food and beverage. We thought about maybe adding it to commercial low and high-density residential.
Yeah, we've talked about low-traffic food and beverage.
Yeah, Jim, you're right.
Yeah, oh, we, yeah, we had, um, we had maybe add low-impact technology. Oh, that's removed from the current district, not add.
We have definitions need clarification on those. Low-impact and light industry, right?
Yeah.
Right.
And Natalie made a point that there's no medical laboratory definition, we need one for that.
Yeah, and, and not only that, but there's not allowed anywhere except in HHS. But that will depend on the definition, right?
Right, and, yeah, medical technology is its own use, but it's also-
So did you say potentially adding, I can just look on your spreadsheet, um, adding low-traffic food and beverage to commercial low-traffic? Or not?
Yes.
You, okay.
I think possibly is what I remember, isn't that what?
Yeah, we, we said, um, maybe, yes, add to low-traffic, um, commercial, and maybe add to high-density where HDR meets commercial.
Right, okay, yeah.
You know, and we were talking about the idea of like, there being like a little corner deli, that kind of thing, and how that might be appropriate in those spaces.
And that was low-traffic food and beverage?
Yeah.
Right.
So-
Special permit.
And leave it in CMT, CHT, and SP with conditions. Oh, was that part of Carolyn's BTD?
Uh, let me go-
Well, it's in there now.
BTD was already on there.
It's already in there now, but she just, she just-
She added HHS, though. Got her sheet.
That was the same, do I, what did I do with her sheet?
Yeah, it's already in BTD.
Okay, yeah.
But the suggestion was to add it to HHS.
Yeah. Yeah, then the other thing that we had to change the, what's allowed in their medical laboratory, we had consider in commercial low-traffic and medium-traffic.
With special permit.
With special permit, yeah. Everything is with special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which one was that?
Medical laboratory.
Medical laboratory.
But we need a definition for that, and needs, the definition is-
Yeah, I think that's the, yeah.
The low-tech. That was, that was it, oh, um, we had consider allowing a motel hotel in commercial low-traffic, oh, no, commercial medium-traffic.
Yeah, commercial low-traffic.
And commercial traffic, that's more of a conversation. I was, I was thinking that in commercial traffic, it wouldn't be inappropriate to have a hotel in the light-pink zone. Jim was thinking it probably would not be appropriate, so that's a conversation to have.
We had a split, we had a split of opinion on that one.
Take it to the board. The thing that happened when somebody came and wanted to do a hotel across the way, next to Chow, or something, was in order for it, which is CMT, in order for it to be profit-
So, uh, wait, across from Chow, across Oak Crest? That's commercial low-traffic. Right?
Yeah.
On the corner?
Isn't it, out the, out the corner? Like, I think, oh, oh, in the- In the part that's, um-
Right by the, closer to the Y?
The one that's, you know, up for sale, there's-
Oh, okay, yeah, that's commercial medium.
Yeah, that's commercial. No, to the left of, yeah. And the problem was, is that in order for it to be cost-effective for them, they needed to have, go higher than 35 feet. And so we got into the height thing, which is also a consideration in some of this stuff, maybe for some of the uses.
Yeah.
If it were to go-
That's a globe, that, other than the business and technology, the height restriction persists.
Applies to everywhere, but so, some of this becomes, though, not, like, it, it won't be, ever come up.
Well, it's the same thing as billing a single, well, depending, if you bought a high-density residential piece of property, it wouldn't be cost-effective for them to then build it.
So, I mean, we could allow it, some could flush, I guess.
In which case, do we want to consider, you know, like, will, will 35 feet of height be appropriate 20 years from now? Like, do we want to think about, you know-
Can't even get that far.
Construction, will we ever, will we ever build something that's only gonna be two stories or three stories?
And I guess, as you look at the hotel motel thing, thinking about adding it to potentially CLT and CMT, how does that then match up with what it is that we're trying to promote in the upcoming comp plan? We have those uses in the village already.
Yeah, plenty of them.
Let's not talk, you know, talk about occupancy and things like that, but those things exist in the village already.
Yeah, and wouldn't we like to have something that's, more unique?
Right, but, yeah, honey, yeah, but, um, is that the right place for it? Um, in that corridor as you move in?
I, I don't think in CMT it is, actually, in some ways. Although, yeah, because, so the first hotel is the old Ramada, blue, whatever.
Yeah, oh, yeah, blue, yeah.
I think that's soon enough, thanks.
That's kind of, and that's kind of my-
I mean, it was Howard Johnson, all, they used to all be over there, right on Route 13.
I remember.
Well, Howard Johnson's was where Applebee's is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I remember Howard Johnson's, that was like-
I do, too.
Yeah.
Years ago.
Came here, that's where we had to stay in the middle of danger.
And that used to be the Ramada years ago, was it the Ramada?
It was a holiday inn.
Little parties over there.
Okay, um, sorry, that's still up-
Oh, no, Sheraton was Trip Hotel.
Tough for debate, but I guess, you know, think about it.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, too, is that when you have a hotel or motel, you tend to have a lot of parking, because we have parking spots for each unit, and if we-
I'd rather have housing of some sort.
Yeah, I mean, think about how we-
I'd rather have a, an apartment building or something than, than a-
I think that's that, right, that progression as you go down. Again, if it's something you want in the corridor, but it's that progression as you move in.
Yeah.
Just as you're, you know, on the outskirts of the village, moving in, whether it's on the Trip Hammer corridor or not. Does that give you, to go on between now and next meeting?
What I might suggest is, I will sum this up in the next couple days, everything. For example, suggested low-traffic food and beverage and commercial low-traffic. Have, if everyone wants to kind of jog on a note, you don't have anything to say about it, you have no problem, that's fine, but we can always bring these up, see what everybody feels at the next meeting, and either take a vote or whatnot, and say, okay, yeah, let's propose doing that, and we'll go down to Swan.
Yeah.
And then we'll go to the next group, for example, if it's, if it's, uh, Lorraine, and you describe what you want to change for the next meeting.
Yeah, and so that was my question, right, do we think, so, we got a lot of information from Jim and Yumela, thank you, by the way, for that.
I think her answer should have most of it.
Do we think at the next meeting, we would be ready to make decisions, or do we want to-
Go through the whole thing, like you said.
Or, or do we want, you know, the next group of people, like, we can take some time to go through that, and then at a subsequent meeting, follow, I mean, I, I think by then it'll fall off people's radar, so, I'd like to at least touch on it somehow at the next meeting? Maybe if that's what we focus on?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay, so let's-
A complete one.
Okay, so let's do that, then.
What were you gonna say?
Oh, you mean, go back through what they-
Yeah, at the next meeting, go back through and then say-
And summarize and be sure we're all agreed on it.
Okay, and then at the one, after that, then the next group of people can go.
And then that goes on your master?
Yeah, yep.
And that will be sort of our-
Yeah, so at the, right, so we discussed a lot-
But we'll have to get our definitions in order, in order for that to really be-
I'll give you some examples, some definitions.
Yeah.
And like I said, I'll sum up all the suggestions that Yumela and Jim have come up with us, like, what changes you want to take out, what you want to put in, what uses you want to take out, what uses you want to put in.
Okay, yeah, that would be good.
Okay, so we'll do that, then the next meeting, we'll, we'll come back to this, to this set.
That makes sense, why don't you refresh it up?
I don't want people to, yeah, and I will-
It is, it's a lot.
Okay.
So, have you, have you updated the Google Doc? Okay.
Yep, and I made sure it shared with every, I shared it with everybody here. I got yours, your email on this, I just shared it with you as well. So everyone has it, you're the new owner.
Yeah, it's not working for whatever reason, I can, I'm an editor on this stuff, but that's okay, we'll figure it out between now and the next meeting.
I mean, if you have to, just copy and make it a big file, and then you own it.
See on the last one?
The what?
I've got to answer that.
My sent email at-
Okay.
The last one, Mike Sennott's.
Okay. Well, thank you. Okay. So next time, we're gonna go, we're gonna do this again, we'll finish this up.
That's it.
Yep, and then after that, yeah, Lorraine and I'll go, unless, yeah, because I don't think Lorraine and I, I think this took up a good chunk of meeting, I suspect that will be similar.
When you set up-
Let's do that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's one.
No, I thought you were kind of updating it as we were-
Oh, yeah, and, and when you, you can still-
Yes, we will.
Link over there for all the updates. When you, when you, when the Google Docs, when you click on it, whether you click on it today or tomorrow, or the next day, you always see the most updated.
Okay, well, the screen just jumped, so, where is it?
How long it took me to realize that we're always dealing with special permits, like, yeah.
It should do that.
It should do that. So right here, you see indoor recreation club.
It is, that's basically a general comment, and, which is why it's important that they're asking.
I just, I just wanted to, okay, so this, this includes, reflects today's discussion, all right.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Everybody? Okay. Next out on the agenda is interview of a potential board member who is here. Let me just pull up. Is it not working? Well, there we go, yeah. Yeah, Patrick, you can actually come up and stand if you want, if you stand by that little podium thing there, it's actually easier for people, not that there's anybody online to hear you, but if there were, it would be easier for them to hear you. But, so welcome, thanks for coming in, and what we'll do, you know, really just play back, give us a little, little information about yourself, you know, where you live, how long you've been in the village.
My name is Patrick Shanahan. I live on Dart Drive, been there about 35-plus years. So, I'm, I'm really interested in being part of the continued planning of the village. I've seen so much stuff happen in 35 years, and I'd be part of that now.
What do you, what do you do in the, not in the village, but what do you do for, for a living?
I work at Cornell, I'm an internship coordinator for entrepreneurship at Cornell.
I'll open it up to other folks to ask questions.
I already remember the kennel at the end of Oak Road.
Real, do you?
Yep.
Oh, gosh, well, see, we moved here, what, 30 years ago, so, all right, so there was, no? The only kennel around, I guess. Well, good, I'm glad, because I'm thinking, so every once in a while, I think, do I really have this straight? But no, I just remembered, once it disappeared, that it was not going to be allowed to continue. But it was actually fine, and I live right nearby, and dogs were only noisy when they were getting fed.
Right.
They were, and other than that, they honestly were fine. There's many more chainsaw noises and lawn mowers now than dogs barking, that's for sure. So, do you have some issues that you, that you want to be, participate, but are some things that you think-
Listening to what you guys are talking about tonight, you know, it's, again, you guys are in progress continuously, and I'm interested in learning more about how that all happens.
So, and do you know that, how often we meet? Do you need any of the parameters of kind of what we do?
I know, we meet twice a month, two hours.
Approximately.
Yeah.
Or as needed.
Right.
Yeah, so we do, we have, you know, we'll have some smaller subgroups, you know, this go-around, obviously, we've been focused, focusing on reviewing the charter uses, and really, everything that we just discussed. So that was one of the three subgroups that we got through, they're part of the chart. We also, so we do, we've got our two, our two, you know, monthly meetings. Once a year now, we also do have a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees, so that just happened a couple weeks ago, or maybe it was longer than that, I don't know, I'm not sure.
July, it was, yeah, so it was a couple weeks ago.
Weeks ago. Um, and then, we also rotate through, one person from the planning board goes to trustee meetings. We do it by month, so, this month is my month, so I went to the last one, and then I'll go to the next one. And, you know, we take notes, we report out on that, you don't have, those ones you don't have to go to in person. We, you can, you can if you want, or you can join over Zoom. I'm just really just taking notes and then reporting back to-
Do they meet just once a month?
They re, they meet twice a month also, twice a month for the, for their monthly meetings. They meet more than twice a month, but we go to the, the monthly meetings, yeah. And those, those start at a different time, those start at 7:30. Generally, they're pretty quick, depends, during budget season, you know, longer. The, the annual reappointment meeting, that one's usually a, a longer one, because they've got a lot of stuff to do, but, yeah.
I think originally, it was presented to me that one of the reasons we do that is so that we kind of know what they're talking about that might impact us as a planning board. But I think we've gotten a little more inclusive about what we reported, but that's really the stuff we, that's important to focus on when you're paying attention at their meetings, like, oh, if they're gonna be doing that, then we've got to be thinking about how this could affect what's going on with us, so.
And sometimes, just the way that things work out there, you know, a developer, somebody might come and, you know, do it, generally, you know, Mike or the mayor, they let us know, but, you know, there will be people that come and do a presentation, or bring up some topic or something at the trustees, and then the trustees pass that to us, so it's kind of nice to, you know, have a heads-up and be there and part of whatever, you know, it's one thing if the, the trustees see a presentation, and then those people come here, and we see something different, it's kind of, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice, nice to be aware of changes from board to board.
Yeah.
So, Pat, I have a question for you, since you're a longtime member of that neighborhood, do you think that that new radar signal that they've put in is helping the speakers?
I mean, you see how fast they're going.
Yeah.
They still keep going the same speed.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and then when I see sheriff deputies speeding up and down the roads.
I know.
They, I've seen them go 50, 60, and Ronnie, the mayor, he was just down the road.
Right.
I talked to him once about it, and he, I said, hey, they don't even put their lights on, so you got them to put their lights on.
The sheriffs, you mean?
Yeah, and they're still like, you know, going anywhere. There's no reason for them to be going that fast, but.
I've been walking that neighborhood a lot this summer, because I do a whole loop. And so I noticed that, myself, I've noticed, at certain times of the day, I think in the morning, it's really bad. I mean, I've seen people blowing up Dart Drive, and they're going, I can see it flashing, and they're going 41, and they, and some people do slow down. I've seen a lot of people that don't slow down, though.
Yep.
But I think in the afternoon, they tend to, they tend to slow down. But I was kind of curious, because I'd like to see those go up in some of the other neighborhoods that I've been complaining about, like Beaumont, Norway, Janiver, they're speeding through that whole neighborhood also.
I think that's an issue everywhere with the speed, everyone's just speeding. I mean, running red lights right here.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I've seen some crazy stuff.
Yeah. And so, you know, the way people are driving these days.
Yeah.
Unless there's a sheriff presence there.
Yeah. Like, there used to be at the bottom of Dart Drive.
Right. Yeah. And so there's actually no, you know, doing the road now. So yeah, if you don't have anything like that going on, they're going to speed.
Yeah. They need to come back and sit down there. I don't know why they ever stopped. They did it for years.
Well, they don't have the staff. They don't have.
There are design solutions for that kind of thing.
Exactly.
They're expensive or they require people making an initiative. So, you know, when we have nice white roads, it makes people want to go faster. So, you know, you can, you can do road narrowing, or you can like add bike lanes that are protected. And that actually makes people perceive the road as being narrow, so they can go slower. You can do things like called chicanes, where the road, instead of having Dart Drive so long and straight, if you have, you know, you could, so you have that space on either side, if you make it so that the shoulder goes like this and then like this, so you have to do a little bit of a, a twist and turn. You don't change the size of the road, you just change kind of the orientation sometimes. And that makes people go a lot slower too. But those are, those are things that, you know, like when we're doing road changes, we have an opportunity to kind of pipe up and say, think about those.
The road needs to get narrowed, then they put the sidewalk in. I've talked to Jim Courtney quite a bit about that whole project. And, yeah, it has ditched people.
No, they just passed me now.
Yeah.
They get passed on that road.
Yeah.
Pat, are there any other issues that you want to see addressed in the village or any other?
No.
Any other things you could be a potential problem or? I mean, I don't want to put you on the top, but some people, when they do come in, they kind of have an idea, man, I wish this could be improved, or this could be improved.
I mean, the mall, obviously.
I was just going to ask you, even the mall doesn't?
No, no, the mall is definitely an issue. I don't know what you can do. Because obviously, do you guys have any control over that?
Not much.
Yeah. Because it's privately owned, right?
Yes.
You mean the mall or the condition of the roadway or?
The hole.
The whole, the whole neighborhood.
I mean, instead of fixing the hole, that huge hole, they just put cones in it. I mean, they fixed it now.
Yeah, they did. They did fix it. They did.
Right. So there, you know, right, it's tough. It's, obviously, it's private property. The mall owns it. You know, when they want to do a new use or something different in there, there's a, you know, there's a discussion about that. But, or if somebody wants to do some, something specific and they might have to come here and get a special permit first. But, yeah, you know, the, the village can't go and, you know, pave the road. It's not a village road. But there are, you know, some options that, that, you know, Mike's been going through to, right, try to get them to fix that stuff. They're lengthy processes. That, the one pothole finally got fixed, that doesn't mean that, you know, the road's in great condition. But, yeah. Right. Do you think Keuga Medical would have said something with their parking lot?
We, we actually asked them to do their portion, but the parking lot is shared by the entire mall, even though Keuga Medical owns their building.
Right.
And the parking lot is theirs. It's understood that it's shared and they all pay. It's like a homeowners association for parking lots. So that gets more complicated. That's the best way I can describe it. Don't hold me to this. But, and so, yeah, I don't know why they don't, I mean, every time I go down there, I just mutter and I say, I think we should have a sign that says, you are now leaving village property. And, and, you know, because where you hit all the potholes.
You can see that. You can see where the nice road on West Graham, when you go get to the YMCA and then pass there.
And that becomes mall property.
So you guys bought that part of the road, right?
Well, I forget whether we bought it or, we did something.
It is, yeah, maintained by the village now.
Yes. Yes. But yes. So now we have ownership of that until, well, ownership, I'm not even sure.
Obviously a line drawn.
Yes.
That's where Lisa wants the sign.
That's where I want the sign, is you are now leaving village property. So that, because everybody will say, why aren't you guys fixing the potholes? Well, because we can't. Well, we could, well, actually, we can't legally, because we'd be trespassing. But it's very tempting. But yeah, no, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah. And so what, you know, we don't have jurisdiction. We can't do certain things. But this is actually a really exciting time to be part of this, because.
Yes.
Session here, when we're talking about like what's allowed to be done where, this is the kind of thing that, you know, maybe we can't change the mall, but we can talk about like, well, in this zone, we want this kind of building or this kind of development. And when we kind of nudge these and change these and shift the definitions to, to basically let this document be an expression of what we want to see out of the village. And so this is a really good time to be in there and kind of put in your voice about how we want the village to develop. And of course, what's really helpful about that is right now, the village just is working on the comprehensive plan. And Lorraine did a lot of work on that. And there was a big survey that was out. I don't know if you saw that one.
No.
And there was a, a bunch of feedback in the survey about how villagers would like to see the, the village continue on and develop. And so the idea that like, we look at that feedback and the comp plan, and then think about how we want this to move. And really like, you know, when we say yes and, and we take, you know, we X out something and add something else in, we're really kind of making an impact on what's going to happen, maybe 10 or 20 years down the line. But this is the time to start that.
And I think one of the things we've also discussed is penalties. But that, we don't have a whole lot of leverage, actually, aside from that. There's very little that we can impose. And we're a small village. We have one guy that handles.
Everything?
And as well as all these other things, more positive. And so it's just not, you know, we don't have our own police force. We don't have any of that. So it's kind of a different, we're a different beast than a lot of our surrounding municipalities, actually.
So as far as the village, where all the apartments have been built, like is that village or town?
Which ones?
On Warren Road, I'm sorry.
Oh, you mean East Point?
No. So East Point on Beaumont is us.
On Beaumont?
On Beaumont, yeah. Beaumont is, Beaumont is the village.
Okay. What about beyond that?
No, after you get to the sheriff's office, it's, it's some town.
Okay. Because just that whole thing building up is increase the traffic flow. And Beaumont too, just insane.
Well, I live on, I live at East Point. So I can, and I'm going to say this because everybody blames the traffic on East Point. But I'm going to tell you what, people are going from Warren Road to Triphammer and they're cutting through. And that's, and they do the same thing. I see like, like I walk in the morning coming up Dart Drive and I see them flying down Dart Drive to get to the other end. So it's the same thing. So, and I mean, I'm sure a lot of them are the local people in the neighborhood, but a lot of them are transient and they're coming through.
Okay.
That was one of the things when I worked on the last comp plan is we have a couple of east-west roads. And one of them is, even though all of the traffic coming, turns and twists through that whole area of Janivar and all that, you can see, but it still doesn't slow people down necessarily.
Right.
And now I live on Key Gides Road. And speaking of the sheriff, sometimes I'm out gardening. I think, I hear the sound coming. I think, who the heck is that? And you guess what? And I think, oh, great. I can't call it in, can I? But yeah, no, it's, it's, and so Dart's another one. It's an easy.
So the sheriff has, a couple of weeks ago, actually, there were two mornings, the sheriff was actually backed in Norway up to the trail. And he's been ticketing. But I've only seen him there twice.
But they can't just do that all the time.
And it's like eight o'clock in the morning when I saw him.
Yeah.
Jim or Yemila, did you have any questions?
Uh, no, no.
Sorry, you're, you're leaving? You're done?
Yes. Today is my last day, my last time here at the village. And I'm not leaving because I don't like the work. I actually really like it a lot. I just, I can't do the work from Ireland. I'm moving.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I, I know Mike mentioned twice a month. I mean, this, this board meets the second, second, yeah, second Monday and the last Tuesday. So that means every month it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
And then the trustees are the first and third Monday. It's easier to, but you only have to go to those once every five months.
Oh, okay.
Then it's busy though, like every Monday. And then you think, oh, wait a minute. Then you forget that it's planned to go on Tuesday.
It's just like, whatever in my life.
Sure, yeah. It's crazy.
I know.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in. We appreciate it. You know, what we typically do, oh, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't even ask you. Do you have questions for us?
So Kevin is alternate?
He is right now.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Moving to.
Permanent.
So what does an alternate do?
Tomorrow.
So good question. So the alternate, they come to all the meetings. They, you know, they participate with comments. Really, the only thing that they don't do is vote when they're in an alternate position. If Jim wasn't here tonight, we would appoint Kevin, the alternate, as a full voting member just for tonight's, just for tonight's meeting. And then he would, you know, be a, everything plus he would vote on items. So that's really different. But yeah, the, the alternate is expected to come to all the meetings just to, you know, keep up with everything that everybody else on the board is, you know, talking about and discussing.
And the alternate is a volunteer position.
Yeah, I was just.
And the full, once you're a full member, you are paid for your time.
Oh.
So if you're a, actually, but if you are just here, if everybody else is here, so, you know, you don't want to wish people to be sick. But, but the real intent is to have somebody who is in the wings that understands what's been discussed, so that reasonable decisions can be made if someone's out.
And things always come up. People.
They do.
People get voted to different positions or people, whatever, so rotating.
You know, we, you know, obviously, somebody is moving. We've had people obviously retire off the board. I've done this for a long time. I don't want to do it anymore, even though it's great. Or, you know, we have people who, we had a former planning board member who became a trustee. So that opened up a spot there too. So, yeah, people, people move around for a number of different reasons.
And if you, if you are a voting member one night, you do get paid for it.
You do get paid that night.
Yes.
Yep.
Now, was Phil Dankert part of this group?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I was on the board when Phil.
Okay.
When I first came, yeah, he was on the board then. And then he retired off. Yep. Yeah.
Any other questions for us?
You live near Phil.
That's it.
You two know each other?
No.
No.
I live in two, on the sharp turn.
Oh, you live in one of the new houses?
No.
Go all the way to the end.
He's on the inside of the turn.
Oh, in the house?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. What's your last name? Okay. So I just know Ted.
Used to own it.
Own it. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I think they moved houses as a career and they put that there. It used to sit where Lama Lodge is now, from what I was told.
Really? Wow.
The foundations moved and the rest of the house.
Okay.
But yeah, so we interviewed, we had somebody come in last time and expressed interest, obviously, here tonight. There's one other potential person who has some interest. It is a full board right now. But obviously, you know, as people come in, you know, we want to talk to them and see. We will at the end adjourn into executive session just to talk about planning board appointments. And then, yeah, and, you know, as, as things come up, obviously, we encourage you to keep attending. You know, we're glad that you came in to talk to us. You know, if you want to keep attending, it'd be nice to see you. If you're busy and want to do it over Zoom, you can. If you can't make a meeting and you want to watch it, they're all recorded and they're all put up on YouTube. So if you, yeah, if you have a restless night and you want to catch up on us in meetings, they're there. We can give you the dates of the ones of, you know, substantial discussion about stuff too. So, but then, and yeah, I'll be in touch with you, you know, as, as things progress, if there's an opening spot or if we're, you know, we know something's coming up. I'll let you know.
So do you have any questions? I know Crystal, over there. So she had to come in and present to you guys what her plan was to develop.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. Because what she wanted to do there required a special permit.
Right.
Yep.
Crystal's, she was, had a, a plan for development.
Trying to do apartments.
Yes. Gosh, that was a couple of years ago already.
Yeah, yeah.
It was before my time and I've been here two and a half years.
Yes. Wow.
Cool. Great. Thanks. We appreciate you coming in.
Thanks for coming.
Nice to meet you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the trustee report. It was a, it was a pretty quick meeting. They approved their minutes. They re, or I guess appointed Devin Walker as the BZA alternate. That was really quick. And he had previously been on there.
Right.
And they.
You lost track of them.
Yeah, lost track. So obviously Kevin was appointed as our, as our alternate for right now. And then a full member at the next meeting moving forward. The, I think probably the big item on the agenda was approved sanitary sewer connection variance application. So they didn't approve it, I don't think, right? I kind of got lost at one point. Okay. So I don't think they approved it. I'm sorry if I'm wrong. There was some discussion about the language that was in it. And it's, it seemed.
Resolution, you mean?
Yeah. Or maybe.
No, there's a variance application.
There's a, there's a variance application.
Oh, oh.
And there was some discussion about the language that was on it. So they wanted to, I think, get that cleaned up before they, you know, approved it and said, yes, here is what we want to present to people to, to, you know, fill out if they, if they need a variance. Under general discussion, there was some discussion about getting an estimate right. The village is moving to a dot gov website. So there was some discussion about getting an estimate for that. Village of Key of the Heights just went through that. So that should be something that, you know, it's, it's the same, Ronnie was getting a quote from the same group that, that did it for Key of the Heights. There's a couple, Kath mentioned a couple webinar series and some Nikon water series presentations that are online now. I think you were all on the emails about submitting letters for, letters of support for the sidewalk grant, or maybe not. I think, maybe it just went to the, it was mostly among the trustees.
I don't know anything about it, but I know, I know that Carolyn wrote it.
Yeah. So we were off the meeting here, right? Carolyn had, Carolyn put together a proposal for a sidewalk grant. I think it was actually two different grants. They applied to both of them. So they were just soliciting some letters of support for that. It was really quick. It was like, hey, can you do this in the next two days? It was primarily to the, to the trustees. The Trails Committee got funding for a study. I don't know if it was funding for the full amount or at least a little bit of funding to do a study. Pat did the planning board meeting recap. There was a discussion, Chris Ferrell?
Yellow.
Yellow. He was the one who had come in and done a discussion about a possible development or series of them on the.
Asian kitchen thing. Yep.
On the Arrowhead, whatever, whatever owner of the property is. So he had then after that met with me, and I had mentioned this at the last meeting, he had met with me and Ronnie and Mike to say, well, you know, here's what I want to do. And there were some options, right? What he wanted to do wouldn't fit into how it's zoned. So we said, okay, well, you can, you know, you can go and apply, you can go to the BZA and get a variance. You're going to have to do that for every, you know, single thing, right? It's not a variance for the property. It's a variance for the specific thing you want to do. You can talk to the trustees about changing the zoning of that lot to allow what you want to do. Or there was a discussion about, you know, possible, possibly doing a PDA there, except it's not big enough for a PDA. So then there was a subsequent discussion. And it was something that I had suggested. I said, well, you know, our code says you have to have five acres to do a PDA.
Why does it say?
Does it? And there's nothing in state law. It's just what we say. So they had, they had a short discussion about what if it's not five acres? What if it's four? What if it's three? And there didn't really seem to be any appetite to do that. So that was kind of a, and then they did adjourn to executive session for the potential acquisition of real property. And I left because.
It was a dedicated session.
There you go. So that was kind of the recap of that.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is other business. Yemila?
Thank you all for, for filling my ultimate Mondays and Tuesdays twice a month with this discussion. It's been really a pleasure to be here. And I'm, I'm glad I was able to be here. And I hope I didn't bore you guys too much.
No.
I think you contributed a lot to a lot of the discussions ahead. It was the tree law. Oh, my gosh. Yeah. Solar.
Because it's your profession, you're a professional planner.
Yeah.
I always felt, okay, you've got the gold standard. You can tell us, even though we're all thinking, oh, my God, that's a lot. And, but we could work that. So I'm, I'm going to really answer that.
Thank you. One thing I will suggest, I know not everyone's online very much, but I showed Jim a couple of YouTube videos. But also, there's a thing called Planning Talk. If anybody goes on TikTok, there are these like little short two and three minute videos that, that really put forward in a very entertaining way, some basic kind of planning discussions and fundamentals.
Planning Talk?
Yeah. Yeah. Planning Talk, T O K. It's a TikTok thing.
We should watch one every meeting. We should watch one.
Who would have thought that it would have been planning board stuff that got me on TikTok?
There are some really fascinating ones. And they're short and they're entertaining and they're really educational. And I have a playlist of them that I put together for a talk that I gave about how, how people can use videos to kind of educate people about stuff. And so I would say, if you're curious about some of these things or some of these, like how do other municipalities handle this? Or what is the gold standard of how we do roads or neighborhoods or whatever? Just go on there. There's tons of really fun, entertaining videos with great visuals about like, well, how do you fix this road that's people go too fast?
Yeah. Well, maybe there's a speeding one.
There, there are a couple of them. There's, they do these great.
I know. I will.
And they, they kind of draw over it. So you can see like what the, the new version of it would do. They're really, they're, they're, they do way better than a person can with just words.
Yes.
To explain some of the concepts.
Yep.
And it might be really fun to just start, like, start looking at them, maybe, you know, suggest a couple to each other about, you know, things that are fascinating or.
I've never done it. I've never.
I'll download them. I mean, is it just like YouTube, right? I mean.
Shorter.
But I mean, what, would we just go tiktok.com?
And now you'd have to, now you'd have to.
Open up the.
We'll share with you.
For now, you can.
Yeah.
I'll, you know what I'll do? I, so I have a little, a list of all these videos that I did for this one presentation. I can send you guys the presentation and that has a bunch of little.
I mean, I am capable of setting up an account. It's just, oh, my God.
I don't know if you want to.
I know. This is what I mean.
Just make sure you use the same password for all the other accounts. Use the same password.
Yeah. But I mean, there's YouTube ones too. Um, they can be a little bit longer. So, um, the, I like that, you know, two, it's two minutes. I did just a concept. Other times you're sitting there for like 14 minutes. You're like, okay, it might be a little bit too long for me to, you know, dive into this.
Good though, those longer ones.
No, they're great. I think one of the, it's, it's nice because it introduces concepts in a short.
You're thinking about it. Yes.
Yeah. And then you can decide, okay, I want to dive into that one.
Yeah.
And you go to the YouTube and you find the, you know, 25 minute session about stuff.
And, and at the end you say, well, that was a lousy teacher. Maybe I need.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll share, I'll share links to some of my favorites.
Okay.
Thanks.
Jim?
Um, I don't have any business, but I'd like to thank Yumila again for her service. I mean, she, she really knows a lot.
Yes, she does.
Has added a lot. And, um, I guess in a way it would have been nice if it worked out. She could have been a full member for longer because of value and for contributions and her insight and her knowledge. And I can also say that just having three meetings and working with Yumila, in addition to having nice discussions about other things that didn't relate to our assignment. Um, I learned a lot. Um, you know, she told, explained how like how to, you know, redesigning streets and intersections and so forth. And you gave me some references to some YouTube videos, which I went and watched about designing settings. You know, they're very interesting and informative. And she was also able to, I had some preconceived, I don't want to say preconceived because that's the majority, but some initial impressions of like what shouldn't, shouldn't be there. And after listening to her, I was saying, well, yeah, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's another way to look at this and it wasn't right. Yeah. Maybe this should be allowed here or I can understand. So Yumila was a tremendous asset to this committee. And also, as I said, personally taught me a lot in three short meetings. So I.
Yeah.
Think we all really appreciate, or I know I do, um, you know, her contribution over these years. So that's all I have.
Lisa?
No, I, I don't think I do have anything.
All right. All right.
Um, just a couple of things. So I did notice at the mall repaid that one really bad section on, um, Catherwood and Loop. So I was glad to see that. But what about the rest of the holes? Are you working on that?
Very slow.
Working on it.
Okay. Good.
That's just the process of.
Chipping away. Keep eating up on them.
And I also want to thank Yumila. Um, you've been a real asset to the planning board. I've learned so much from you, especially when we were working on the tree law.
Oh.
I learned so much from you during that time because I knew nothing about shrubbery and trees and you knew like everything about them.
And then you took, oh, and you know, and you ran with it in a fantastic way. Things that I thought I interrupted because Northeast Pediatrics, I'm driving home from BJ's, big volcano around dying sapling.
Yep.
Just saying.
Anyway, Yumila, I have a card for you from everybody's.
Thank you. Oh, that is so sweet. Thank you so much. Brownies.